All right, this meeting is being recorded. We're gonna start with roll call. Wayne Ferris.
Here.
Jay Beasley.
Present.
Mary.
Here.
Alan Paulus, Mr. Martin Hopkins. Jen Sherburne is here. Mike Roseman.
Here.
And Rick Graverson.
Here.
And Jan Wilson was not able to make it, so there are six members here. Thank you and welcome, everyone. The purpose of today's public hearing is for three marijuana facilities to present information regarding their marijuana grow facility and hear information regarding their requests for agricultural growing permits. Tonight's public hearing will allow residents of Newfield Township and the public an opportunity to voice their concerns or support as well as to ask questions of the three businesses. The three agricultural businesses presenting and requesting grow and processing permits tonight are RQMI, Oceanic Gardens 2, class C permits, one processing permit, location at 176th Street. You are welcome for a public comment after his presentation. Thank you for letting me know they come here.
Thank you, Madam Chair person, and thank you to planning commissioners for allowing me to to explain and defend our application proposal. This is our site plan. The property in question is at 2022 South 176th Street. That's a new address, by the way. Since turning in the packet of application materials, we have gotten that address. I distributed the assignment of address form that the county produces in hard copy to commissioners. You can find it underneath your folders on your desks. I only have five, I apologize for being short. In addition, I included the soil erosion permits that we were granted by the county as well as a clarification or correction to the size of the barn, which is 11,200 square feet. Other than the barn, we have a couple of different features to this property. Otherwise, it is pretty straightforward. Forty acres that comply with a setback. The setback is 100 feet on the side yards and 100 feet backyard setback, 150 feet from the right of way. The, other than the improvements on the property, everything within those setbacks is, well, the fence defines the boundary between the setbacks and the farm field. The interior of the fenced perimeter is for cultivation of cannabis plants outdoors. The site plan indicates a driveway, a parking lot to accommodate 20, 30, sorry, seasonal and full-time workers, a irrigation shed, driveway, and a vegetable barrier so that anyone passing on the right of way on the public way will not be able to immediately see into the structure. That's, those are accommodations so that we can comply with the ordinance, local ordinance. The, there are also state rules that we're gonna, of course, abide by. One is a privacy screen along the fence that faces the street and cameras that will be recording video 24 hours a day, and that video is kept for a minimum of 30 days. We keep it for about four months. Our security is paramount to us. At some point, if anybody wants to talk about security, please don't direct your questions to me. Please direct them to our Director of Security, Officer Steve Pepperell. If you raise your hand, Steve, just so everyone knows to be able to get some of your wisdom on what, what security means. I don't have any more to explain other than our original application is for 18 class C permits and one processing permit. I don't know that that's possible because there are only 17 permits available. So obviously, class C permits, so obviously that'll have to be amended based on availability. But I'd like to answer any questions that you have, if I may.
If you have a question, will you please approach the podium, state your name and address?
My name is Dango. You want 18 permits, explain to me the permit. Is that a permit for a building, for a new site?
Sure.
Or? Explain to me what 18 permits does.
Sure, so as far as the, the building goes, we've applied for a building permit with the local authority having jurisdiction, that's the building department. The planning commission is hopefully going to approve, and this is what I'm asking them to approve, is our site plan. And our site plan will accommodate 18 class C permits. A class C permit is, I guess, bureaucratic speak from Lansing. In order to grow cannabis, you have to have a permit to do so locally. One classy permit for adult use entitles the bearer to grow 2,000 cannabis plants. So if we were to get two classy permits, that would be 4,000, entitled the bearer to 4,000 cannabis plants, and so on, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, just a follow-up, though, that facility will hold, when you are currently, is that proposing or is that up? Is that what the 18 permits will fill that building?
So actually, we have a building that's proposed to be 11,200 square feet. But that's for maintenance, for drive and storage. The cultivation goes, happens as a row crop outdoors, under the sun and the moon and the stars.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. If any of the commissioners have any questions, I would love to pay a response.
We're gonna hold off our questions to the special meeting if that's okay.
Or Joe Bruce, resident East Gill Road. Sir, you mentioned that it's a zoning application and licensing application, correct?
You made the zoning permit application and that was approved, yes.
May I ask when that zoning application actually took place?
I don't have the document for me, so I can't give you a date.
This year, last year, last month?
Last week, I don't have the documents, I can't give you a date.
Thank you. And Chairman, as a matter of point of order, does the public only get to respond in these three segments to the individuals, or will there be after?
There is a, there is a public comment section during our special meeting also.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sure, we can hear what they're asking and what they're talking about on here and all.
If I can repeat, he asked about a zoning permit and when the zoning permit was applied for and approved, I don't have it, so I can't actually answer with specificity.
Can somebody repeat questions you had to ask?
I'd be, I'd be happy to.
Did you hear his answer to?
Yeah.
Get a microphone. Jim?
Yes.
Do you mind turning the podium so it's facing that way? And maybe then backing it up a little bit? Let's try that.
All right, hopefully my voice carries, okay. Jim Draper, I live on 184th Avenue. This facility, is this the one that would be close to Blodgy Lake? 176th Avenue?
Yep.
Okay, so I guess my question is with 18 class C permits, you're looking at potentially 46,000 plants within maybe a quarter mile of Blodgy Lake there, how's that gonna affect the residents in those lake houses? As far as smelling, things go?
Did that work better, could you hear better?
Not really.
No?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have the microphone, I don't have access to the microphone.
Phone him up there. It'll come down this way a lot better than it goes up.
Okay, okay, let's try that.
Again.
Sure.
Yep.
I was gonna wrap.
So I'm Jim B. Draper, live in Ponder Drive, just west of Sperrya.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I think you're good.
Okay, so I'm Jim B. Draper, live in Ponder Drive, just west of Sperrya. My question is, with your proposed facility, how many employees are you looking to have hired at this place? How many workers?
I anticipate that we'll have between 15 and 20 full-time employees at this facility and seasonal employees that will total around 50.
Okay, and are you looking to hire local people, or are you bringing people in, or?
It's, it's expensive to bring someone in from out of the area, so it's folks that live in the area that that work for us and have worked for us.
So they have their own housing and that kind of thing?
I expect everyone that works for us now has a house and lives in it, or an apartment. Yeah, so at least that's what's been explained to me, I have a tendency to believe that.
And the first question, I'm sorry, we couldn't hear. So one permit is what, 2,000 plants, 4,000 plants?
Two, 2,000, yeah. One permit is 2,000 plants, I'm repeating your statement.
So you're wanting 2,000 times to 18?
Well, there aren't actually 18 licenses afforded that are left according to the total amount that was approved by, by ordinance. So we're not, unless something changes, we're not going to be actually getting 18. I'm just repeating what our application did.
And then this is just last question, this is just a general question. These marijuana facilities, is it medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, marijuana, is it commercial marijuana? Is it going out of the state, what's?
Sure. I don't wanna get too bogged down in details, but I think it's a perfectly reasonable question. All of the cannabis that's proposed for this facility and the licensing and the permitting that's proposed is for medical marijuana only. By, the way, the federal laws work, cannabis cannot travel, marijuana, high THC cannabis, otherwise known as marijuana, cannot travel over state lines legally. So this is a closed market, it's for Michigan, Michigan owner.
Any other questions for Kyle or Shannon? And as soon as, I'm gonna interrupt you because I realized after we moved the podium up there, now the people online aren't gonna be able to hear.
They'll hear.
Okay, great.
They'll hear, awesome. My name is Sharita Prant and I'm from the village of Sperrya, and a couple of things. One, I'd like to know, this is the second girl operation for yours, right? Like it's, you already have one that you already have in, and now this is the second one?
Second location, yes.
Correct.
She asked it, how many locations that, that we have, and the answer is actually one. And this is the proposal for a second, so this is about 23 acres.
You already have the permissionary thing from the last meetings from the, okay. The other couple of things, are you guys only buying land off in our area, or do you buy it all over the state?
Newfield Township is a wonderful place to live and work.
It was. It's not anymore.
Is that true? We absolutely disagree on that.
Okay, and that's okay, we'll agree to disagree, that's fine, you have your opinion on, but we live here all the time and we wanted to raise green.
I live here all the time, too, I'm a long-time resident.
But there's lots of concerns, and we voiced our concerns at the other planning commission meetings, and I feel that a lot of us were unheard. You know, we were kind of, we're letting up, you know, we're kind of stuck with the three that had already applied, and even though they didn't come into compliance for renewal, and then we say, okay, well then all of a sudden, oops, well we have an application for one more. Well then all of a sudden now it's three, you know, and when does it end? I mean, it's just taking over, and the answer can be.
I came into that question, I don't have any.
Did you have any possible pre-approval, because I was surprised at all the fencing and stuff that's already out there to go off? And if, if it didn't get approved, that'd be an awful waste of a lot of money, wouldn't it?
If we, if there is a pre-approval that we have, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have a question, but it's more of a point of order for the board. At your last planning commission meeting.
Oh, will you state your name, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, my name is Brian Sico from High Tower Lake Road. There's 11 class C permits for RQMI, there's seven for True North and fourteen from High Cloud. That was those recommended following day, board approved it. That would equal 32. And you have like 50 classy permits, would there not be 18 left? It's, it's a small point of order, but something that may want to be made.
That is correct. Wait, there was one excess that we thought was a class C. And so.
There are 18.
Then you went to our creation. State direction.
Hi, my name's Kristen Olson, I live on McLaren Lake, East on Time Court. I just want to say, I have children, this is for all of you. I have children, I understand the concern with these popcorns and everything else, I was totally against them. If you would ask questions, if you would talk and get to know that they're not here to destroy us, they're here to offer jobs to people that can pass the background check, it goes through the state. So you're worried about hiring out of state, you're worried about how many jobs are gonna be local, you're worried about raising your family. You really need to sit here and talk and get to know people who are interested that are judged.
This nice lady is right. We're, we're keeping all of the, the money we spend on staff, on contractors, we're keeping it in the community. The idea was to give the local economy a shot in the arm, and by college, we haven't done that. We've seen how, see the effects already, and it's something I'm really proud of.
Any other questions for Kyle? If not, we'll move on to our next presentation. Oh, there's a lady behind you, I'm sorry.
Ladies first.
I, I guess you have the option.
I'm Dale Vanderwater, and I live in Hill Drive. My question is, I understand about the safety, you've been saying in the videos and all that, but what are you doing to protect the groundwater? That seems to be a big issue in Colorado, and how the groundwater is all being contaminated by the potards.
So if that, if that has, if that's the case in Colorado, I don't understand why it would be. So one, one way that groundwater can be contaminated is with fertilizer. I don't know a different way that a cannabis farm could contribute to groundwater contamination. There really isn't any other affluent or contaminant or pollutant that we apply. We're not allowed to use pesticides as any other farmer in the state can. You go to the MRA website, you can get a list of all of the banned pesticides that cannabis farmers have to abide by. And it's a very short list of the pesticides that we can use. They are clove oil and active bacteria that we're able to use. It's all organic. So those are the pesticides. If we wanna ward off bugs or mold, we have to spray organic sprays and they have to do it, you know, several times a week because they're not very strong, they don't work very well. But they do help, but they're very kind on the environment and they're very kind on the patients that consume the products that we produce. As far as the groundwater goes, if there is any, if there's any extra fertilizer running off of our field, we are losing money. We, we go to great pains to make sure that the fertilizer, the very expensive fertilizer that we buy, goes directly onto the plant. The way we do that is by using drip irrigation. That is able to deposit very small amounts of water over a long period of time, exactly where we need them, so that we don't have any runoff at all. So i- if there is any groundwater contamination, it would have to be explained to me exactly how it's happening because it, it's not something that I've contributed or our farm.
I think it might be something that officials can look into that and do some research on it because Colorado has had these farms for a long time now, and yeah, it's, it's a great expense trying to clean up the.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Nicole Maynard.
Thank you.
Are you, are you monitored by the DEQ? And other governmental, environmental?
Personally or professionally? She's asking if I, if I, if, if, if the proposed farm would be, would be under the jurisdiction of the, what's now called EAGLE, right? There's no longer a DEQ, but, yeah, right. And the answer is absolutely, yes. So the, the biggest thing that EAGLE or the DEQ is interested in is protection of weapons. The proposed property has no weapons on.
Well, thinking facility, I work for a marijuana facility. We have our own wastewater plant, which entails them to come to our plant. So if you're having any kind of environmental impact, they should have some sort of regulation or something, I would think. Or are you not big enough?
I don't know what the environmental impact is in, in a way that's different than a vegetable grower. We're growing plants outdoors in rows, it's a row, we're growing row crops. I hesitate to call it a facility, it's a farm, we're farmers.
Thank you. Would you have a question?
My name is Jim Shally, live on High Tower Road. And I just have a question. Is this marijuana growing taxed any differently than a vegetable crop or a millerated cultural crop?
How much time do you have? Top nine blocks. He asked if, he asked if cannabis is taxed any differently than what would be a regular vegetable farm? Satellite farm, experience farm. The answer is, it is, so. John, help me out, what's the cost of one of these licenses? We're applying for 18, what's one cost?
40,000.
$40,000 for one license times 18. It's $5,000 per permit, 18 permits per, if we're so lucky to get all of them. I don't think that's necessarily the immediate case. $5,000 per permit goes to the township. We're not allowed on a federal level standard deductions, so we pay around 45% income tax. And then there's the sales, special sales tax on all the products that go to market. We're taxed far more heavily than any business in the nation. By, I'm tempted to say by about quadruple, but I wouldn't be able to prove it. It's all.
I just have a follow-up comment on that. I, I thought that that was gonna be the case, and I would just like to say personally that if you are being taxed like that, that the state should be giving some kind of justification for that. And that's, that's my only thought is that, you know, this is bringing jobs to the community and more than it's legal, and if these permits are approved, I know what the law is, I know what you're paying in taxes, and I'd just like to state with this that I don't think that it's right for you to be taxed more than anyone else is.
You're not gonna get any disagreement from me. The state does have a revenue sharing program where they'll give, they crack off 10% of all the tax revenue that they make off of the cannabis industry and give it back to townships that opt into the cannabis program. So Newfield Township could be getting their share of the revenue that's collected by the state. The problem is, the state has a little rule that says you also have to have a dispensary in the township in order to get that. I didn't have anything to do with making that rule, I don't know why they threw that in there. But it's the case that there is a revenue sharing, though, and it, it's, you're right, it's, it's the right way to do it.
Yeah, I'd like to say, you know, with all this money.
I'm sorry, can you state your name and address?
I'm Carol Nash, I live on 196th Street. I would just like to state that with all this money that they have thrown around to whoever, all the people that live here and their livelihood being messed up and, and the factories being destroyed and everything, we're not giving nothing for it, and we're the one that's gotta deal with all the garbage and the smell and the inconvenience of it all. So, you know.
So that's a question, we haven't destroyed anyone's property. We're not destroying lives, and we go to extraordinary lengths to not do that, we're farmers. We're not destroying lives. And we go to extraordinary lengths to not do that. We're farmers.
Messing up our way of life here, our peace and everything with all that going on with smell and everything. I have a plane jet behind me and every time the wind blows that you're rolling, I smell it.
Jim, you've already had your chance to talk. I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that would like to ask Kyle a question? Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Brockelli. I live in this township in the county of Shelby. Shelby supervisor, actually. I wanted to think, I actually wanted to make a comment. I really don't have a question. My wife, who died of a breast cancer, last seven months of her life, she was prescribed medical cannabis products. That got rid of her pain and suffering, so just want to say thank you.
Okay, my job is hard and it's made easier by talks like that. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can you raise your hand and state your name, please?
My name's Diane. I'm curious, you're the supervisor of Shelby. How many facilities are in Shelby?
I answered.
Yeah.
We don't have any. We're going through a referendum in May to allow the people, the residents to decide if we're going.
Any other questions for Kyle?
My name is Ruth Bittar. I live over on, I'm right. You're going to let the residents decide. That's a very, very.
I'm sorry, your question needs to be, or your comment to Kyle.
Okay, I'm going to drop you. You're here because, okay. You already have one plant. Why do you need another one? Just like in Dayton Township. They're not alone, huh? They're in your township. Why should we allow a second one for you? At eight, how many plants at 18 or 17 counts? That's a lot of marijuana. Yeah. That's a lot of, I mean, you don't need to come over here and tell us that you're white. I'm sorry to put you white.
Sit down. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to order. You cannot.
Excuse me, Mia.
But he doesn't need to come to our township and tell us how to do things here.
Thank, that's my statement. Thank you.
Yes, he did. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right, let's move on to our next presentation. Let's move on to our next presentation. Thank you, Bob. Our next presentation is from Preeminent Laboratories. Steve. Steve, please come sit down.
Is it okay for them to sit back there and call us, Parker? Is it all right for that? Enough of the peanut gallery here, cussing and swearing at everybody out here. And all they're going to do is get in and in and in and we're going to sit with this.
You mean you're going to.
Have this, have that. Now, I mean, it's not, I'm talking.
Enough. Enough. Ma'am, would you like me to get you a chair so you can sit closer and hear better?
No, but this man will call me.
Okay. Enough with the calling names or don't. I'm saying enough with the calling names. Is that clear? Maybe you can't see me back there. I'm saying enough with calling names and that goes to everyone you included, ma'am. Is that understood? Is that understood?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Sorry. Preeminent Laboratories, you are requesting two class C permits at the location of 7400 East M20.
Yes, my name is Christopher Amori, representative of Preeminent Labs. So Mark McGuire, project engineer, put together this great site plan for us. Just a couple of things. I really just want to thank you, thank you for letting us come in and make our presentation today. Just wanted to add, just like everybody else here, we also care about the community. We've invested in the community. Members have bought homes in this community. And just like the other groups here, we do intend on hiring local. Like I said, it's a lot cheaper to hire local than to hire anybody from out of town or anything like that. So we are agreed in the community and there's a commitment. Because the other groups, cannabis groups last year provided turkeys. We provided resources to the community and, you know, at the same time as a new company coming in, we want to do the same thing. So like she's, like you said, we are requesting two class C permits. We did recently purchase a property at 7400, 16 acre property. The plant is, or we have five greenhouses here. In addition to kind of an outdoor grow. So we, like I said, kind of have a hybrid grow. So we plan on doing initially 4,000 plants through our outdoor grow. And then come wintertime, come cold weather, ideally we can go indoors with the five greenhouses that we do have. And then a warehouse that we plan on building, kind of at the end of the year. One of the feedback we got from Steve, there, we're going to take into account, we have storage containers that are going to be temporary. Well, instead of that, what we're going to do is build a barn and a shed where we could have a lot of our packaging and trimming in health. What could also allow is use scrubbers and those type of things to keep the smell outside of, especially kind of side of the farm as well as keeping it as soundproof as possible. So similarly to the requirements for the township and the state, there is fencing around the pretty much entire property, or incidentally, entire grow property. And there is shrubbery we plan on including as well as shears where, you know, it's face leveling, not able to see into the property as is required and tend to be, like I said, in addition to this community that we're here for. Plant is, I probably say around 10 employees. It would be able to have, a few might be temporary just depending on the market. And like I said, local is kind of what we're looking for. We had talked to other groups and there's nothing but good things to say, so hopefully we can kind of continue that going. There is, so it is kind of a green field right now. And so the tension is driveway being paved, kind of parking, kind of driveway here, so cement, certainly I've done this before in front of people, so sorry if I'm blocking anything. But cement here, we have a warehouse kind of built right here. And these are where the five greenhouses are. And then this is, like I said, is the outdoor plot of land. One of the requirements of the MRA is security, 24 hour monitoring. And the requirement by the MRA is it's being held for 30 days. So that's our intention, if not longer. And yeah, and one of kind of a big improvements we're planning on doing is an irrigation system. I'll be honest, I don't know much about it, but I'm told that Venaform 4G is pretty good, pretty impressive. And it allows for nutrients to kind of be watered within the well and that is kind of our plan. Except project engineer, Mark McGuire is here. I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, Chris, you did a really good job. Kind of presented this. I think one thing that's unique about this property, it was originally, you know, agricultural use, cornfield, probably in the past few years. But the way this property is shaped, it's a dog wing. So you've got this bigger back part, it's whatever, 10 acres. And you've got a little stick coming out for your driveway. So actually, all the operation is about 500 feet back. You get that privacy off the main road that's secured by the perimeter fencing around the grow area. And some of the site improvements I'm excited about is that we got this gravel paved driveway circulation, but it also includes stormwater retention. So all the improvements made to the site. The intention is to have the least amount of impact to your neighbors. So we've got fencing, proper setbacks, stormwater retention. And setback further from the road, just out of the nature of the selection of the site.
Yeah. And another thing that we did have, we initially had planned on using water tanks. And I believe they're kind of in this area here. Instead, we're going to use an irrigation control system that's replaced right there.
Thank you, John. I'd like to open it up to specific comments for this particular.
I'm Scott Parks. I'm the director of the property. Part of that property is 45, my southwest side of the land. We do an entire down section. That is the most remote part of my 35 acres. Am I even talking about it? Can you hear me up there?
Yes, sir.
My family and I camp there every summer, many times in the summer. And now we're here to get fence lines or if I'm going to walk my fence, it might be your surveillance. I've lived here for 20 years. I moved here, I grow 45 miles square, one way every day to get the monitor. And now I find out big business from out of town is moving in right next door to me and I can't do anything about it. Obviously, this is just a rubber stamp meeting because it's heavy equipment, steel already, and certain marks all over, right? I present the board for doing this without going to vote, to the people first. I don't think you've been very representative of us. Still not a big good neighbor to you. I won't hear very little. The underside of your fence, mister. I've got a six hour home as much as I'd like to stay in this rest of the year.
Thank you.
I just have one question. I don't say a lot about this. I mentioned the MRA requirements.
Is there one is the MRA? MRA is the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, essentially the Michigan Governmental Agency that regulates cannabis. We're actually changing the name now to, we have a cannabis regulatory, cannabis regulatory agency.
My name is Daniel. You mentioned something about a water system. You have water collection systems to incorporate with your irrigation, for rainfall or whatever. Do you guys collect any type of water to do that with? I don't know if there's. And I guess I'm asking that question to all of the tree companies that are represented, if they have a type of water collection system to help with the irrigation.
I know for a fact that this plant doesn't have any water harvesting plants. It's an irrigation well, currently. That's something definitely, if it's going to be looked at.
Good groups, KGLR, once again, sir, thank for presentation. If I may, this is at a point, location correct?
Yes, sir.
You own the property? Did you recently purchase property?
I personally do now, but the company goes on the property.
Have they recently purchased property?
It was purchased, I believe, last year, but pretty sure it was last year.
And since it's already been taken for well drilling and certain attributes of property?
We've got permits for the wells. I don't believe the wells dug as of yet, but I'd have to confirm that with me.
Has any zoning permits been issued?
We're zoned, we're zoned commercially. So we have not, we do not have any additional zoning as of yet. We are zoned commercially.
I understand that. That's in the article, C1. I was literally asking if, it seemed like quite a bit of risk, purchase property, to drill wells and to get to this point in the process and then ask provision. Money has been laid out. Pardon my voices. But I question, what gave the warm fuzzy to go ahead and spend that money that you would arrive at this ultimate location and not encompass resistance? It was a total risk, 100% risk at the, at your hands.
I agree with you. We haven't made the, you know, the overly expensive investment as of yet. We're waiting for our permits to come in, but we have started doing our due diligence, just like any other company would.
So essentially by purchasing a C1 property, you started taking all the actions that have been taken to this point?
By getting a C1 property, we did look into to make sure we could do everything we planned on doing. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Irene. I live on Loop Road, 5260 Loop Road. What happens if you do not get your permits and you can't build on to it? What happens to the property then? What are you guys going to do?
As of right now, we don't have, we don't have that. We haven't made a decision on that as of yet.
So it could still be wasteland and you guys would back out.
No intention of it being a wasteland.
You, but I mean, you're not, you wouldn't be able to build on to it.
Correct. I do, you know, I'll be honest, I do not be owner of the property, so that decision will be made by the owner of the property.
So something else can move in that we need that one? Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
It's up to the owner of the property to handle it any way they'd like. So as of right now, I can't really make that decision for the owner of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Just to confirm, Chris, because I know you have a lot of expertise in this as well. Industrial hemp is only licensed by the State Department of Agriculture. It is none, under the local control in any manner. And so if permits were not issued, either Preeminent Labs or PFS Farm Services could go in and grow hemp in actually any of these locations with no local control on what was done at all and all the stink and stuff associated with industrial.
Any other questions for the M20 facility? All right, let's move on to our next presentation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody.
Finally, we have CGCC, Charles Bracama, requesting two class C permits. And the location is at 5703 East Loop Road.
Thank you. I didn't bring a big site plan. It doesn't look like anyone's really looking at it. Do you guys have an extra copy of the chance? Yeah, paper side. But if anyone wants to see it, I'm free to email it to you. If anybody wants to see my site plan, I'm free to email it to you, send a letter to you. But it looks very similar to this one. It's a straight parcel. So I'm requesting two class C permits, 2,000 plants each. It's going to have a chain link fence with black visual barrier around there, same driveway. I'm also going to be building a barn, a watershed. My property is neatly positioned because it's surrounded by trees. So it reduces the nuisance of smell and any visual nuisance. I hear a lot of kind of pushback on the odor, so I'll just kind of jump into that. The odor from our marijuana farm is many times seen as a nuisance and is sometimes actually enjoyed by the people. Other times, the odor from marijuana might be seen as a nuisance. CGCC, LSC, would like to remedy the smell and has developed a plan to help contain the odor. This will reduce odors to the maximum extent in order to be a good neighbor and business president of Newfield Township. CGCC has reached out to the surrounding neighbors and introduced myself so I can begin to be a good neighbor. Follow information on auto control is information that might already be present in agricultural community. So the odor from our marijuana farm is well known to only take place during the end of the season, directly correlated to the harvest time, which is usually in October. Conservatively, this would be one month out of the year, representing 8% of the year. Harvesting earlier or later in the year, depending on seasonal changes and the quick dry time, could extend the duration of that odor. So it could generously be two months. And that's estimated to take place from September 15th to November 15th. It represents two months, that's 16% of the year. The reason for my property is good, is location based. It's surrounded by trees, like I said. It's surrounded by trees. Like I said, it's not located on a busy road. And it's actually, I think, it's one of the best locations for cultivation facility. It also has access to three-phase power, which a lot of the facilities do not have. It also has high-speed internet, which also a lot of the other facilities do not have. Being not on a busy road, it's going to help reduce any odor presence and any visual nuisance to neighbors and residents. I'm providing 150-foot setback on the front of the property, 100-foot setback on the sides and the rears of the property. And this will also help reduce odor and potential nuisance. The property is now surrounded by a large number of homes. So it'll reduce the number of people that would be susceptible to potential odor problems or visual nuisance. There are many other odors that are normally found in farming activities that take place in close proximity to my property and we grow. It's important to note again that my odor would only present later in the year, September to November. When the weather is turning cold and people usually have their windows closed. The spreading of manure on fields, which a lot of you probably know about, is usually done during the spring and summer months. While windows of homes are usually open. There's currently an agricultural farm to the west of my property, estimated to be 55 acres. It's unknown, it's unknown if the farm started around the field, but it's very common. Raising of cattle and pigs, which is known to release non-failable odors year-round, but mainly during the warm months, unless during the winter. There's also a cow pasture across the street. It's not a large cow pasture, but it's, there's some. In comparison, these two agricultural uses are commonly accepted in the farming community, even though they create a nuisance of odor. Depending on the personal preferences of that person. After talking with the neighbors, I know irrigation is a big thing people bring up. It's known that the 55-acre parcel to the west of mine is irrigated. Now, while it may not look irrigated, there's actually underground irrigation pipes that irrigate the field. And also to touch on the water, any water runoff will be in compliance with the MRA, Eagle State of Michigan and Newville Township. Very minimal to zero runoff is expected. And also CGCC will install a stormwater infiltration square to the north side of the 60 by 64 building to prevent any runoff from the building. I'd like to highlight, like most of these previous meetings, I believe the majority of people here are in support of the marijuana businesses, not against. As most of you know, majority of Newville Township residents approve the legalization of marijuana for 21 years and older, just like alcohol is currently. I know some of you here voted no, I don't agree, and that's okay. I truly don't believe a marijuana farm has negative effects on the everyday life of somebody that doesn't agree. Sure, everyone isn't going to agree on certain things, but America is founded on diversity, allowing those differences in people and businesses to coexist with each other. As a proud American citizen, I too believe that citizens have the right to voice their concerns. But when these concerns are untrue, I have to address why they're untrue. A few of these concerns I'll address here. The wells will not go dry because of marijuana cultivation. I've not seen any evidence of the wells going dry in the township, but it's been talked about frequently as a concern, and I'm not sure why.
Charles, you've got about a minute left.
Okay. Crime will not increase. Ocean County Sheriff's Department was here tonight, was recently here for me. And evidence showed there was no increase in drug crimes and little to no effect in crime in general. None of the young children crime had anything to do with the new marijuana facility specifically. I believe a small increase had to do with COVID. I'll jump ahead. So a few concerns about property values will increase. I have a seven-page study here and I have a bunch of comments for you guys that show that between April 2017 and April 2021, property values rose $17,000 more in states where recreational marijuana was legal compared to states where marijuana was illegal or limited to medicinal use. The increased revenue from the marijuana excise tax, which we talked about today, which is 10%, and the sum is given there to the municipality as long as it's a retail store. The municipal licensing fees can be used in investments such as public services, infrastructure, which should turn drives higher demand in real estate, higher property values and greater revenue for property taxes. I can leave some of these copies for you guys to look at. My history is I ran a bunch of retail stores, about seven stores, and my majority owned and decided to sell. At no time were we any in non-compliance or never got any kind of bad thing with the MRA. We always told everything. We were the first in all of our townships. So these seven meetings are nothing new to me. So I just asked that my certain kind of approved, my permits get approved because I am devoted to being a good neighbor. It's a smaller farm than the other ones. Just decided it will be better and less nuisance.
Big trust. Are there any questions for Charles? Yes, ma'am.
Understanding that you say you own this property?
No, not yet. I wouldn't make that type of investment with my own money until I know I got the permit.
That was my question, was it's been approved? So it hasn't been approved yet, so you can't go forward with it?
No, no, this is, this is what I asked for tonight to be approved.
And the man before you spoke of being way back, way from the road, not bothering anyone. I'm from 5494 Loop Road, almost across the street from your location. And there's nothing hidden there. It's a very residential area. It's not business around its residents. And Blount Lake or High Tower Lake has a lot of summer residents that will not be real happy about all of that either.
Yeah, so just to respond to that, I'm a far away away. I don't think the odor is going to have anything. It's not going to carry over as a lake at all.
You're not far away from us. Nice beat, sir.
Yeah.
This is also a well belonging to Olman Brothers. On the property right adjacent to you, it's about 100 yards through Judy Baker's property, vendor of 80 acres. That is controlled by Olman's and is leased by Olman's. And they have a six-inch well. It's not done by a whole bunch of lines and water in the ground, like you said. Second of all, I've talked to the neighbors around there and you'll have to tell me the names of the people that want this thing across the street from them. Because I don't know any neighbors that want it across the street from where they live. They watch the deer in that field all the time, every night, what coming out. You put a fence around it, that's, that's all done. Their whole life is changing. Their culture is changing. And I don't think anybody should be able to. My old sergeant used to tell me, I don't like people that swing on my gate. And I guess that's what's happening here.
Sir, I'm sorry. I missed your name.
I'm Buck. B U N C E.
Thank you.
Sure. So just to respond, I'm not cutting down any trees right now, but I'm just putting a fence up on the cornfield, what was a cornfield. And for I to comment, I'm still hiding in the back. So I don't know if there's going to be any disturbance to wildlife. But I also have to get a permit from the DNR to make sure I don't disturb any wildlife. The fence, yeah. Well, it's just like building the road. The animals should go right over the road. The fence, they just walk right around.
Amanda Hunter, you said 2,000 plants. Is this for medical or recreational?
2,000 plants per license recreational.
That's, I believe it's 1,500 plants for recreational.
It's 2,000 per adult use license for MRA.
All right. Just want to verify on that.
Yep. So I've been in industry for three years, the license industry. I've actually been a carrier of assistance to others. I'm not, most of them might not like that. This is, this is me getting into the legal market three years ago, as soon as Michigan passed their laws. And all the townships I've worked with have always been happy, you know, residents and townships are sometimes hesitant because it's a lot of unknowns. But once you actually get to know us, you end up liking us.
Joe Bruce, T C O, once again, thank you for your presentation, sir. I may have missed her or did not hear. You said you're not going to proceed until possible approval of the permits. Is your intent, do you own, plan to buy, or is this going to be a lease installed?
I, I plan to buy in the future. It'll be a lease and then a buy.
Sir, if I may ask, is there a timeframe? Do you have to a four-year, one-year, one-year by one-year or one-year block?
I plan on leasing it for one year and then buying at the end of the year. I have entered a capital. Now I'm doing this on my own, so.
At that point, would your planned purchase include the entire property?
Uh, yeah, right now it's the entire property. There's, there's wetlands like way in the back of the property. It's a 73-acre parcel, but, so I'm not going to deserve a lot of that land. A lot of it's wetland, so at least there's no point. But like I said, it's going to be good hunting land and we're actually going to still use it as hunting land.
That's where the fishing river creek starts through. The fishing creek starts in that area behind there.
Yeah, way back in, it's on the second parcel way in the back there. So there's two, there's two like 30-acre parcels. That farm is actually going to be the first year only 10 acres. It's just going to be in the cornfield. The cornfield is about 14 acres total tillable land. So relatively small in comparison.
Any other questions for Charles?
Do I have to ask a question to the public?
The board is not going to be answering any questions or engaging them during the public hearing. Sure.
Okay, so at the end of this meeting, then you guys can be amongst yourselves and decide who gets what permits to any.
The purpose of the planning commission is to make a recommendation to the township board, which meets next week.
When we find out at the next township meeting or when we find out the results of the?
The township board has the final say in that meeting and that's Tuesday. Yes, ma'am.
Um, the other.
Can you state your name?
J D, I have a long, I can't remember by the level of county board. The other facilities are adding jobs. Your farm is going to be much smaller, but are you still expecting to add some jobs to the area?
Yeah, so I plan on having 15, 20 employees. And of course, they'll be hired locally. I mean, that's going without, without saying. I mean, of course I'd hire locally. I love this township, you know? Everybody at me, you know, out about a town or High Tower Bar, it seems like everybody's for it. You know, whenever I've gone to these meetings, it seems like the, you know, reclaim your township people are the only ones against it. So of course I'll hire locally. You know, I'm sure that there's a lot of applicants that would love to work in these farms and love to have a job.
There is. And so are you also going to be giving equal opportunities for women who apply?
Yeah, definitely. Definitely. So we had a vice president, so for AgriMed, the company that I co-founded with Greg Mackey. Our vice president was a woman and our head of compliance, another partner of ours, was also a woman. So three males and two females.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Nicole Mary, I've heard many seconds. Are you a subsidiary? You're completely separate from any of the four, the three that are already here and the fourth that is trying to come in. You're different from all of these other ones?
Yes.
You're a standalone.
Yep.
Any other questions for Charles?
I just, this is Toby Miller. I live on 200 Avenue. A lot of my friends already work here at this place. But the question is, you said you guys are going to recommend your thing to the township. Is it the township to make the call if these guys are approved or is it the people who valid? Because there's a lot of people here that say they don't want it. A lot of people say they really want it. Is this going to be a ballot or is it the final decision in the county?
We have an ordinance in place that lays out the procedure. And that ordinance states that the planning commission makes a recommendation to the township board. Any other questions?
I have a question. Irene, yes, who broke, but this is for all of you. You talked about the only way the township could get any money back, $10,000 or whatever, is if they had a dispensary. Would a dispensary come into the area?
No, no, as per new field ordinance right now, there's no retail stores allowed.
Right now?
Well, I'm just saying that there's not right now. There's, there's, I think there's no future plans for any of it.
Okay, well, that's something we needed to know. I mean, the ordinance only allows agricultural related permits. So we've got medicinal, we've got medical, and we have recreational.
Correct.
Yep.
Plants. Is there any other type of plants that you're thinking about? I mean, right now, Muskegon's planning on having a cannabis fest. A one-day cannabis fest.
So I'll answer that question really quickly.
Is, is, is it, you're thinking about maybe doing that here?
There were seven different types of permits as we looked at opting in 2009, I think, 2019, sorry, in 2019. And of the seven different types of permits that we could opt in, and this was over months of discussion and public meetings. We decided of the seven, we were only going to opt into the five that were allowed or related to agriculture. Knowing that we are an agricultural-related area, we did not allow anything for retail or like you were talking about, I don't remember the name of it, but if you wanted to do like a wine tasting, but for marijuana, we did not opt into that. That is not allowed in our township. Thank you. Any other questions for Charles?
I have several pieces that I brought. Two questions. One, not, this isn't retail related. You said it's recreation purpose, but you're not yourself retailing it?
No, this is a cultivation facility that just grows and then transports the product to retail stores.
So technically, all of you don't have retail capabilities?
Correct.
Correct. So you can't necessarily just turn around and sell it to the area. You have to then go through another, you have to sell your product to another area in this test. Is that correct?
Right. I have to, I have to call a secure transporter, which is state licensed to the MRA as well. They have to pick up the product and transfer it to a, to a processor or retail store. The retail store would be the only place that a consumer could get the product.
So people wouldn't be coming to this area to buy?
No.
No, no. So you're just using the area and then ship out to other areas?
Correct.
Okay. Wonderful. Next, you talked about property increasing values. I know you said you have a study regarding the rise in property taxes. But if you did it on a state level instead of on a more of a township level for those states? Because if you looked at the states of Michigan, as well as how the property increased with the legalization of marijuana, a whole state probably would have risen a lot because not a lot of township proves marijuana. You can't necessarily say on a state level. You have to look more locally. So if you actually look locally at a, at the, what the revenue increases would be to property value.
Sure. So that would be a lot better starting to find. And I would, I'd love to find a study like that, but there's just, I couldn't find it. So I thought the state studies, state by state, for the entire United States would, you know, at least provide some evidence that it's not regaining property values.
And you're looking to buy your property next year. Have you looked into what other growers have paid for their land? Just so you know what you're going to be paying?
Yeah, yeah.
You know what roughly per acre rates that would be?
I, I'm not. What was the question? What, what's the going rate for roaming marijuana per acre? It's really all different. I mean, honestly, I've seen it come down in the last three years. You know, three years ago, parcel buying, probably go for 2 million, you know, but prices come down. There's a lot more producers, so it's a lot less about. So it really depends on the owner.
Any other questions for Charles? All right, this time I'd entertain a motion for adjournment of the public hearing. Motion by Jay, second by Wayne. All those in favor of adjournments, please indicate by saying hi. All those opposed, say hi. All right, motion or meaning adjourn?